Good evening. We're going to begin this evening's meeting with a flash of the flag. Could I have a motion to approve the village board meeting minutes from November 20th, 2025?
Motion.
Second.
Any corrections, additions? All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Okay, next on the agenda is Mary Ann Williams.
Mary Ann Williams, Greater Baldensville Chamber of Commerce, and I know it says special presentation. It's really not. It's just that Chief Levencheck was unable to come to our annual meeting two weeks ago, and I wanted to make sure that he knows that on behalf of our members, we are so grateful for your years of service. And the time that you took to come to our events, get to know our members, I know you said you had no idea. We had so many different businesses and organizations, and you gave people the opportunity to meet you in a very informal setting. I'm sure they shared with you things they never would have picked up the phone to tell you. So, we appreciate it. We are grateful. Thank you very much. If you're looking for something to do in retirement, I'm pretty sure that Nick and Adam at Goldfinch Tattoo absolutely would take you on as an apprentice.
I do appreciate that. Thank you very much. I'll give that the consideration it deserves.
Soon-to-be Chief Lockwood, we look forward to getting to know you as well, and you might want to get a couple funny stories in your back pocket to share. Thank you.
Good, Mary.
As kind of a warning to those of you who aren't normally attending, when the election cycle got changed for the village of Baldensville, usually our annual meeting was in March or April. April. Now it's tonight. Not sure Chief Levencheck realized what he was doing when he picked this date. So, we have to go through some business first. So, we're going to do the appointments, and as I explained to Paul, we're doing them in blocks. If anybody has any concerns, comments, please let me know. Could I have a motion to approve the appointments of committees in various positions?
A motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Could I have a motion for committee appointments, to approve committee appointments?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That one's carried. Moving on to a motion regarding meeting dates for the various boards.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. And finally, could I have a motion to approve the various policies that have to be reviewed and approved annually?
Motion.
I'll second.
Any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. That's done. Okay. So, we're going to move on to trustees' comments, and I forewarned our newest trustee, and we're going to welcome Paul to his seat on the board. He's up first.
Well, keep it short. I'm happy to be here. This is my first venture into anything of this nature, so I have a lot to learn, and I plan on asking a lot of questions, and I'm looking to you folks for your collective wisdom. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll try to keep mine short because it's going to be redundant, I'm sure, and I'm going to echo what everyone else is going to say about the chief.
Or you could save it until...
Oh, it's my... Trustee's comments.
I know, but there will be an opportunity during the ceremony for you to comment.
Then I'll wait.
Okay.
Or I could go first and ruin yours. I'll say that.
Trustee Seiko?
Well, this past weekend, everybody knows it was the parade of lights and tree lighting, so I wanted to give a special thank you to the police department, the DPW, and the community for coming out, and if I forgot somebody, I apologize, but thank you, everybody.
They all came just for that.
I know.
Yeah. Echo what Ruth said about the tree lighting and the parade of lights. Hope everybody had a good time, and I hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving. And like, we'll talk about Mike later on, I guess.
Mike later.
Yeah. So, yeah.
Okay, my comments are going to be to some business things. I met with the deputy commissioner, deputy county executive, and the commissioner of WEP this weekend. We don't know exactly where we're going, but we're working toward a resolution. They promised by December 22nd we would know the future of our sewer department. I wanted to thank everybody in the community who have been clearing their sidewalks, outshoveling and making our community walkable. Those of you who haven't, you can do better. And then I'd also like to point out another thing. This comes up every year with the first few snowstorms. If you're having someone clear your driveway and they're pushing the snow across the street, that's not permitted. You need to talk to them about it, that that's not where the snow can go. And the other thing, I met with Isabel Wilson about climate-smart communities, and Baldensville started this, oh gee, 2014, and it kind of disappeared. We're trying to get it on track again. Going to be, first thing, going to be getting some members of the community to be part of a committee, advisory committee, so if there's anybody out there who is interested in the environment, interested in the climate, and you'd like to be part of something like this, please get in touch with me. Other than that, we're going to move on to the agenda. I'll stick with the agenda.
Okay.
I'll stick to the agenda. Thank you.
You had this look that I'd forgotten something.
Hi, I've got one thing. I just want to give you an update on the budget. Most of you were there. Budget's going really good, but we've still got some work to do. So, there will be another meeting, a work session, open to the public on December 9th, Tuesday, in this room at 5:30 PM. You all have the latest updated documents that were emailed to you about where things stand and what the things are that we have to do to complete the budget. But I would appreciate any feedback between now and then. If you have ideas on it, you don't need to save them for Tuesday night. And that meeting is open to the department heads also. And so, that's pretty much it. And there will be a public hearing on the budget on December 18th, at which time people will be able to come and comment about the budget and also about the tax cap. I think we're going to set those public hearings tonight. Those will both be on the night of the 18th. So, thanks.
We'll go over to our senior center.
I just want to let everybody in the community know a couple of upcoming events that we have at the senior center. Tomorrow, we will be doing our annual tree lighting outside of our building at 4:00 PM. Everyone is welcome. We do have a little bit of music beforehand. At 3:00 PM, we're going to have Rita Jenks and the Village Singers there to sing for us. On December 10th, we will have the Beeville Community Band coming in, and the evening at 7:00 PM for a concert for the community as well. And on the 17th, we will have the Lafayette Community Band at 7:00 PM. And other than that, we'll stick to the agenda.
Okay. Our DPW superintendent is not with us this evening, so we'll move right on to our chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple items. First off, obviously, we've had our first significant snowfall. We're asking people to please follow the village law involving no overnight parking on village streets. That's so that way our DPW crews can keep the villages roadways cleared. It's not meant to be punitive. It's just meant to keep everyone safe. Some of our streets are kind of narrow, and if there's vehicles blocking them, they can't be cleared, then it's difficult for fire vehicles and ambulance to get through. So, we ask for that. Obviously, on Thanksgiving Day, as trustee Seiko mentioned about the parade of lights on Saturday, but we had the turkey trot that went off very well in partnership with the Quanis Club. Incoming Chief Lockwood did a great job with the planning of that. And then our parade of lights event and the tree lighting. You all should have a memorandum from me in your mailboxes involving that event. I think the event is a wonderful one. It has grown in size and stature over the years, and I think it's now become a victim of its success. I think the route is a potential hazard to public safety. It's difficult for those large vehicles to make the turns onto and off of artillery lane. I think that the incoming chief and his team and Superintendent Pascho should work together with the committee and the fire department to explore a safer and alternate route that is more direct through the village. So, you have my comments and recommendation, and I think it's a great event and look forward to continued success and being involved as a spectator, not as someone in the command post overseeing it. But those are my comments about that, and certainly appreciate the partnership that I had in the command post with the fire department and the ambulance corps there. So, unless there's other comments about procedural things, Mayor, stick with the agenda.
No, and I appreciate the letter you gave us.
Yes, sir.
Pointing out concerns. Okay, moving on to pending business. Did everybody get the updated sign law provision? Have a chance to look at that? Would anybody like to make a motion to approve that sign law?
A motion. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate it. Maybe you can have a copy someday. Oh, you have it. Okay. Okay, discussion Ryan regarding the trail signage and trail waste project. I provided in your boxes a reminder of potential names of trails. The sooner we decide on what we're going to call trails, the sooner we can have signs done, so you guys, please review that. Moving on to new business. Could I have a motion to accept the resignation with regret of Chief of Police Michael W. Levencheck effective 11/59 on December 4th, 2025?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mike, you want to go first?
Here's your chance to make comments if you want to.
I was just going to thank you for your time and thank you for all the stuff that I've learned from you. You've been patient with me, being the PBA rep for the board. I've heard a lot of great things. I've heard a lot of things that were disturbing, and I know, I appreciate how personally you took this. I know that all of you guys, this job doesn't end when you leave the building. You take it home. I'm sure there's things that you see when you close your eyes that would horrify us, and I'm glad that you're that line of protection for us. And the morale of the department seems to be at an all-time high right now, so I'm really looking forward to Chief Lockwood continuing the success and bringing this group to be the best in the business, as you've been for a while.
Does anyone else want to say anything?
Yeah.
Go for it.
I think Mike had a lot of the good talking points, and it was really, it's been a pleasure getting to know you over the past four years, being on the board, and I don't think that the police force could have asked for a better chief for all those years to be able to, you know, deal with different personnel changes, you know, and things that, tragedies that have happened over the past, especially over the past few years, with different people having problems, and then, yeah. And I know we have our disagreements on football teams, but we'll get past that. And as far as incoming Chief Lockwood, I look forward to working with you, and, you know, let's see what you got.
Paul or Ruth, anything?
Chief, I'm happy to have had a chance to get to know you a little bit, only for a brief period of time, but I like to think that I know a good man when I see one, and you are a good man. I appreciate your service, and I have a feeling that there's not a rocking chair in your immediate future.
Well, everything that these guys have already said, and just my sincere thank you for your service to this community, and good luck, Mike.
I don't know where to, what my comments should be. I've been around here almost as long as you, and I remember one of my first assignments was negotiating a contract with him on the other side of the table. I didn't enjoy it at all. Felt I was an underdog, but as Mike has always reassured me, good negotiations, both people feel they lose, so that weren't well in those days. It was a fun experience at the end to get to know the officers, and I saw Tom in here a minute ago. He was also part of that process.
He's over there in the corner. He's hiding.
Yeah, it's good. Yep, there he is. They had an interesting tandem of how they worked things. I know Tom would get red in the face, and it was like the world's coming to an end if we don't settle this our way.
That's what the term "good cop, bad cop" means.
Is that what it is? But to everybody, echo everybody else's, you've been a credit to our community from the time you were an officer till now. You've certainly made my transition into being mayor easier because whether it's by accident or not, you're just a button away on the phone. And I also wanted to share with people that on a personal level, 10 years ago, this past spring, my wife passed away. And part of the process is at 442 dial 911, and a police officer responded, had to come, came to my home. By 5 o'clock, I'd say Mike Levencheck was at my house also. And I think that was a personal effort on his part. He didn't have to be there. His officer had it under control. But I think Mike was there for me, to be honest with you, and I appreciate that very much. If there's no other comments, I would like to move on.
Think you need a vote, Mayor.
Yes. Or not. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We should probably do a roll call. No, carried. And we'll turn it over to you, chief.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mayor. It's so thankful to see everyone here tonight, family and friends and colleagues. I was appointed 38 years ago, and I look around the room. There's one person here who was at both events, that's Sandy Baker, who was a very, very young village board member at the time and voted for my appointment as a police officer back in September of 87. And it's 1987 for some of you. Appreciate Sandy, your friendship and being here. And then 17 and a half years ago, we gathered here in this room as I was sworn in as chief, and we might be missing some people, but I've got a very close friend group that I've been friends with since we were 12, 48 years now. So, one of them made the comment to me, "We were here when they swore in. I'd as well be here when they show you the door." You know, with a group like that, you don't have a chance to get too full of yourself because they're going to be sure to bring you back down to the ground where you should be. I've had the opportunity to work with three excellent mayors. Mayor Joe Saracini appointed me, then Mayor Dick Clark, and now Mayor Stevens. And all three of them, what they have in common is a commitment to the community and just want to serve and make the community better. As trustee Shepard said earlier, he serves as our public safety chairperson, and I've only had two of those during my tenure as chief. His predecessor, trustee Rick Presley, and I don't think you'll find a more dedicated public servant than what trustee Presley was. You know, since I was four years old, I told my parents that I was going to be a police officer. And for the last 38 years, I've really got to live that dream. And, you know, I don't think there's too many people out there that get to say they lived their childhood dream every day and that they had the opportunity to do it in a place like Baldensville. We're a unique community here in a unique department. Over 50 years of community service policing, that's been the buzzword for the last 15 years or 20 years of my policing career, but Baldensville's been doing it for over 50 years. Couldn't be prouder that I've been a part of that legacy, and I know that with Mike Lockwood, that's going to continue on. I can't serve for as long as I have without some great people that I've had the good fortune of working with, many of which are in this room. And I'm not going to be able to name everyone, and if I admit someone, please accept my apologies now, but I know I need to recognize some people. Certainly, you can't be a chief without a good administrative and clerical team. And I was very, very fortunate to have, start off with the late, great Claudia Roller, who teamed herself as the real chief, which was accurate because she was. And Sue Ellis worked in partnership with her. And in recent years, I've had Luanne Saint Germain and Dick Long that have been the gatekeepers, and I've had many people comment to me of, "Who's answering your phone? Because I can't get through them at all. They don't let me talk to you and make sure that if the call's getting to me, that it's something that's important and needs to." You know, I've been the chief for 17 and a half years. I can't tell you the number of colleagues that have commented to me about how fortunate I have been because of the two people that I've had as my second-in-commands, and they're both here tonight. Tom Leroy, who retired a few years ago as the chief of police of SUNY ESF, and Mike Lockwood. One of the highlights of my career is that both of the individuals who served with me as the executive officer during my tenure as chief either have been or will be chiefs of police, and I couldn't be more proud about that. You can't be in this profession for as long as I have without the support of family. And I consider myself the luckiest man in the world for my family. That's enough of that. You never know when the right time to step aside is. For me, the time is now. I look forward to some more time with family, with friends, maybe golfing a little bit, and some other endeavors that I'm looking very forward to. I know that Mike Lockwood and the leadership team he's going to put together will take the department to new heights. Mike is without a doubt the right person at the right time. He has my full confidence and support. I leave the department thankful for the opportunity to serve the village for the past 38 years. It was an honor and a privilege. Thank you.
I have all this paperwork in front of me. Chief Lock, you know, Chief Levencheck laid out and choreographed what I was supposed to do, and I flubbed it.
It's all good, Mayor.
So, we're going to take a little detour. I have a proclamation that I would like to read. Whereas Michael Levencheck grew up in the nearby community of Liverpool, the son of William and Marie Levencheck, graduating from Liverpool High School in 1983; and whereas he then attended at a community college where he earned an associate's degree in criminal justice, graduating with honors; and whereas he began his career as a juvenile counselor at the Hillbrook Juvenile Detention Center in 1985; and whereas Mike became a member of the Baldensville Police Department on September 14th, 1987, subsequently holding every rank in the department, including three years as sergeant and eight years as lieutenant; and whereas he was appointed chief of police on May 11th, 2008, serving Baldensville in that capacity through December 4th, 2025, culminating a 38-year career with the village; and whereas the chief's career has been a statement to his commitment to community policing, actively being engaged in community programs and efforts, Mike was Baldensville's first dare officer. Drug...
Abuse resistance education.
Thank you. Officer teaching elementary students about strategies to avoid drug use. In recent years, he's worked closely with the Baldensville Central School District to develop and expand the school resource officer program to include all public schools within the village. And whereas Chief Levencheck has represented Baldensville in a variety of local, state, and national leadership capacities, including president of the New York State Association of Chiefs of Police, a member of the Board of Directors of the International Association of Chiefs of Police, twice-chair of the Andaga Chapter of Chiefs of Police, a member of the Board of Directors of the Central New York Association of Chiefs of Police, Chair of the Andaga County Traffic Safety Advisory Board, and Chair of the Northwest Human Services Council; and whereas Chief Levencheck is a graduate of the Federal Bureau of Investigations National Command Course and the University of Arkansas Rural Executive Management Institute and has used his experience, knowledge, and skill to be a frequent instructor on a variety of organizational and leadership topics to both criminal justice and business professionals; and whereas Mike has been recognized as Officer of the Year in both 1989 and 1991, received the John H. Mulleroy Traffic Safety Award as President of the Day at the 2017 Baldensville Memorial Day Parade; and whereas Chief Levencheck's late wife, Bridget, passed away from ovarian cancer, and he has been a strong advocate for cancer research and those organizations that support and provide care for individuals and their families who battle that disease; and whereas he continues to live in Baldensville and is the proud father of four children and three daughters-in-laws, I now therefore, Bruce Stevens, Mayor of Baldensville, upon the occasion of his retirement, do hereby proclaim the month of December shall be Chief Michael F. Levencheck Month. And in the village of Baldensville, I urge everyone to join in expressing our gratitude and congratulating Chief Levencheck on an outstanding career of service, leadership, and dedication to the community as dated the 4th day of December, 2025, signed by Bruce Stevens, the mayor. So, Luanne's going to let anybody who wants to get a hold of Mike for the next few weeks to get in here and express your gratitude and congratulations if you'd like. Or you can come to Village Hall, and we'll chase them down. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor.
And now, we'll go to the rest of the choreography. I'm bringing this stuff with me. Not really sure how we do this. I assume you've come up. You're enjoying me.
You have to present me with my retirement papers.
Yes, that's what I'm doing. So, congratulations.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Greatly appreciate it.
And enjoy that golfing. Okay, let me know. Okay, I had to come back up for this. Could I have a motion to appoint Chief Lockwood?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Okay, now I'm coming back down again. Get your steps in. I could have made that. Okay. Okay, now I'm gonna administer a deal. Raise your right hand.
Aye.
Okay. I, Michael J. Lockwood.
I, Michael J. Lockwood.
Dusally swear.
Dusally swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Chief of Police.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Chief of Police.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities. That's it?
Yeah.
There's cake in the bag, so. I just wanna thank especially my family, friends, colleagues that have come out tonight and supported me. It truly does mean a lot to me and thank you. Chief Leffencheck, thank you for all the years of service you've provided to the Village of Baldensville, everything you've done for the Police Department. I've learned a lot from you over the years, and there are gonna be big shoes to fill, but I'm excited to do so. For the Police Department, super happy in the direction that our department's heading. I'm proud and honored to be a part of it and just look forward to leading this department to the future. So, we're gonna take a quick break and have cake, and that's it. Thank you, guys.
I'm gonna point out while this is going on that almost thirty years ago, I was a new trustee in the Village of Baldensville, and it was proposed that this young college student be approved as a police officer in Baldensville. And I was like appalled that Baldensville was gonna take this young man out of college before he had finished and appoint him to the Police Department, which I figured, hey, he'll never go back to school. He's proved me wrong. I understand that his mother would have supported my thoughts.
We had this discussion before and we were talking about it, and I said that my mom, and she's the sole reason I went back to school, so thank you so much.
And you went on back and did complete, so very good. And you stayed for quite a career. It keeps going. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're recessed for cake. Are you filling in?
Filling in for a short time.
Okay, very good. Because it says Mike Lockwood. Okay, where are we?
Number B.
Mike's not here, so you might want to take notes. Could I have a motion to appoint Michael J. Lockwood as Chief of Police effective December fifth, 2025, at a salary of one hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Pass the background check, we're all good.
They're still doing the psych event. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried.
Does being a Bills fan kinda, you like automatically fail the psych test if you're a Bills? I think so.
I'll say that's it. All for ours.
Yeah, we are not the same.
Okay, could I have a motion to appoint Michael W. Leffencheck into the position of Outreach Worker One, effective on December ninth, 2025, at a rate of fifty-nine dollars and seventy cents per hour, not to exceed two hundred and forty hours?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? I feel it's important to point out that Mike will not be working at the senior center as an outreach worker. This is, we needed to have a position to put him into. He will be next door assisting in the transition as Mike Lockwood moves from Lieutenant into Chief. There were some things that didn't get addressed because of hiring three new officers this fall and a lot of other things that came up that really sidetracked that process.
Turpti trap, rated lights, all that stuff consumed their time.
Certification, those things.
Light dropped away.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Item D, motion to rescind Resolution Number 141 for fees regarding the Beeville Big Chill on Saturday, January thirty-first, 2026, at Mercer Park.
Motion.
Second.
Once again, to point this out, this is, regards the pavilion, I believe, is that what they, that we waived a hundred percent of the fees, and I don't want to have that as a precedent, so we're waiving fifty percent of the fees. The rest of the fees have been covered by an anonymous donor. Item E, oh, I guess we have to, could I have a motion? First vote on the other one. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item E, motion to waive fifty percent of the park fees for the Beeville Big Chill on Saturday, January thirty-one, 2026, at Mercer Park. Remaining of the fee to be paid by an anonymous donor. I guess I could've read farther, huh? It should've stopped me. Have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carried. Item F, a motion to approve Maureen's Hope with a raffle not to exceed five thousand dollars on December thirtieth, 2025.
Motion.
Second for discussion.
Go for it.
What is that?
Yep.
They're having a raffle. They talked to their council, and they just said that the municipality just has to approve a raffle. And, you know, Bob just said we just had to put it on the agenda.
We're doing this as a courtesy for them.
Yes.
They requested it.
That's good.
Anybody's interested, contact Maureen's Hope. It's a raffle regarding a child who's suffering from a serious disease. And Mary Ann, I see the quizzical look on your, no, we've never done it for any raffle.
Do it. Is this some weird little hidden thing?
No, it's required of the tax law to keep your taxes up status. If you ever ask, you know.
Okay, that's good to know.
So the companies that aren't, they don't know that? They might not be following.
Okay, that's good to know.
So next week we're gonna have a slew of motions.
All of a sudden the chamber's gonna have a raffle.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, we do not get 501(c)(3) status as of right there. We're working on that.
Okay. Could we vote on this raffle?
We don't.
Oh, that's right, you wanted to discuss. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Could, item G, we have a motion to set a public hearing on Thursday, December eighteenth, 2025, at 6:00 PM to consider a proposed local law to override the property tax cap for the coming fiscal year.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Paul, this is something we do every year. If we don't pass this, then we're subject to penalties if we do go over the tax cap. So it's. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Item H, motion to set a public hearing for Tuesday, December eighteenth, 2025, at 6:35 regarding the adoption of the proposed 2026-2027 village budget.
Thursday, December eighteenth.
Thursday, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, it's on Thursday.
Did I just hear you wrong?
No.
No, you didn't. I read it. It's on Thursday, December eighteenth. Thank you.
Six thirty-five?
Yeah, why, half hour?
Well, because I didn't know how long it's gonna take. So sometimes if it takes longer. If not, we can bump it up to six oh five, but I didn't know how long it was gonna take, that's why.
When we've had done this in other meetings, we can conduct business in between public hearings. So we don't have to just sit here?
We'll conduct.
Which we've done.
We've done that too.
Yeah. That's fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carried.
Who did the motion? I'm sorry.
Probably Nate.
Somewhere over there.
Somebody's gotta do it, or else we'll just be sitting here not conducting business.
For the public, just to be clear, it's Thursday, December eighteenth.
Thursday.
At 6:35.
And I just, I don't know if this was clarified with the board earlier. It's early this year, and the reason is that we have to pass a budget by, I don't remember if it's the end of January or the middle of January, but it's sometime where the last meeting is that January fifteenth meeting that we have. The first meeting in January is not, we're not gonna have it on the first because it's , it's New Year's Day. So, in order to, the only other meeting we have is to pass it is January eighth, which is the rescheduled meeting, in order to meet the debt deadline of the middle of January. And we have to have a public hearing before that, and that has to be, if we want to have it at a regular board meeting, for the convenience of the board and people who attend anyway, then December eighteenth is the date. Normally, we wouldn't have the public hearing till very early in January or, no, so.
And you have to calculate the tax cap before that public hearing, or before we adopt the budget?
I, we can't have a public hearing without me being able to say to you what the tax cap is and what the projected tax rate's gonna be.
I sat in on a webinar trying to learn more about it. Mark does.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not bad. It's a formula online at their website, but it's, you know, it has to, those numbers need to be crunched in time for that public hearing.
Thank you.
Crunch time, guys. Gonna be working on budget from now until the eighteenth.
Yeah, so if I'm riding you guys and pressuring you between now and whenever, that's why.
So Mark sent out some information today?
Yep.
Well, yesterday, I sent it to your non-existent email yesterday, so I sent it to your existing email today.
Yeah, we might get them in January again, all these emails are coming in. Okay, could I have a motion for the creation of two new bank accounts, one for bail money and one for court fees and fines for incoming Village Justice Robert Rubenstein, signers-to-be Justice Rubenstein, and Village Treasurer Mark Baker?
So moved. Back in.
So this is if either one of them needs bail money?
Yeah, what, come on.
The way the court system works, it's not something we decide. The justices have a bank account for each thing they might be handling. So Justice Hugel, I don't believe, has a bail account because she doesn't ever handle those type of cases. But Justice Hewling before, Justice Smallwood, Justice Rubenstein will both need bail accounts and fee and fine accounts.
I bet Justice Hugel has one.
I think she'd, oh, one, right.
Because she did fill both roles for quite a while.
Oh, right, yeah.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Motion to approve budget modifications is proposed in the document 2025-12-04, Budget Modifications for 2025-2026 Budget.
Oop.
Back in.
Discussion? See how much smoother that is without a PDF?
Check.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Item K, motion to start preparation for an RFQ for a potential grant application for a TAP grant. This is, could I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, this is to authorize us to prepare this RFQ. A TAP grant is a transportation grant through the state of New York. We're, that has to be submitted by January twelfth. Yeah, gotta have an RFQ out for approximately three weeks, so we're in a tight window. And this just is getting authorization, it's this meeting to prepare it and get it out because we won't be back together again. And Bob has generously offered to look at the document before it goes out, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Item L, motion to vote on the agreement between the Baldensville Police Benevolent Association Inc., the PBA, and the Village of Baldensville for the time period of March one, 2026, through February twenty-eighth, 2029.
Motion.
Second.
You want a comment?
Well, just like you said earlier, if people leave and aren't happy, then you've done a good job negotiating. It's never fun because you don't want to roll over somebody, and then again, you don't want to get rolled over. And I think both the board and the PBA had the best interest of the village in mind in the future of the department. I'm very satisfied with where we started and where we ended up, so I obviously am gonna be voting for it. I don't know if you'd like to say anything, Zach?
So, Officer McHale, PBA President, we came to negotiations. During negotiations, we presented arguments to both sides. We came to an agreement together based off of what's beneficial to the village. The PBA agrees that this is most beneficial to both the PBA and the villages as a whole.
And it's gonna help us recruit and retain the young officers that we?
It will definitely help recruitment and retention.
And for clarification, I just want to be sure everybody understands, this is the tentative agreement that you guys have negotiated. This is not the contract we're voting on tonight.
No, this is.
This is going back.
It's a formality to prepare the final contract.
Yeah, it's a formality to prepare for the red line, which then will be voted on.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure everybody understood that.
I personally would like to thank the whole PBA group for.
You guys did a good presentation. Very, very thorough.
Catered by the black cat, which we'll have to work on, but.
All in favor?
Aye.
I was reading the next, public comments are now. Does anybody wish to address the board? If not, no executive sessions, Mr. Shepherd?
Not saying.
Good. Could I have a motion to pay bills as audited?
Motion.
Second.
I stuck your toes on that one, my fault.
Could I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting at seven oh six?
Motion.
Second.
Good.
All in favor?
All in favor? We're adjourned.
Me too.
Mike, while you're out, we're setting the salary.